Call to order and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Nardi, would you take the roll, please?
Mr. Durkheim?
Here.
Ms. Yasko?
Here.
Ms. Ruskow?
Here.
Ms. Wilh?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Do we have any visitors here for comments this evening? Okay, please come on up. I'm going to read a short statement. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the Board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. So without further ado, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Ferguson. I live on Harrison Avenue in Brookfield. My son Hunter is playing on the varsity basketball team right now. I should be in the gym watching him. However, instead, I'm in here fighting for his civil rights. I've been a parent in this school district for 25 years and never attended a school board meeting. I never felt the need to. I trusted everyone in this school district, everyone. Now, after 25 years and five kids, in D-208 and D-95, that trust is gone. I'm here today to talk facts. I'm here today to talk about our kids' civil rights and hopefully at the end, be a voice of reason. Last Friday, Judge Chris Chow ruled as follows. This court has declared IDPH's emergency rules void. I'm going to repeat that again. The judge declared IDPH's rules void. This is not subject to interpretation. This is not subject to school lawyers wanting it to be something different. It is a statement by a circuit court judge and a judgment order. While my children were not named directly in the TRO, the judge was wise to add specific language for those not directly named on page 28, footnote 39. She clearly states that the emergency order is void. The governor's executive order, the ISBE, and the IDPH emergency rules are unlawful to enforce. Based upon this, the school district has no legal basis for a mask mandate. The emergency order is void. There are a substantial number of parents who feel this mandate is illegal. It is also important to note, the judge's rule stated, if a school is going to enforce the governor's emergency orders and mandate masks, students must receive due process. This process has been denied to all students. She also states, the arbitrary method as to the contact tracing and masking in general continues to raise fear questions as to the legality of the executive orders in light of violations of the healthy children's due process rights. Statutory rights have attempted to be bypassed through the issuance of executive orders and emergency rules. In her judgment, she states, and I quote, "This type of evil is exactly what the law is intended to constrain." I'm here because I care about my kid. My son Hunter is standing his ground by not going along with an illegal mask mandate. He has come to school, come to school the last two days with no mask, and was forced to sit in a classroom by himself with a dean or a security guard. No teacher present, no structured classroom environment, no Zoom meeting to engage in during his scheduled classes, no social interaction. Your segregation efforts towards my son, Hunter, in the past two days have denied him a proper education that he is entitled to, which falls under Illinois State Law 105 ILCS 522d, Tag 112. To be clear, an illegal mask mandate is a civil rights violation. You have denied our kids their right to due process. The judgment states again, the emergency order is void. A mask mandate has no legal basis. And because of it now, the district is committing a second violation, civil rights violation, by denying him a proper education. Because of this, I've had to do certain things to protect my son. I have the money in an account, ready to send as a retainer fee to the civil rights attorneys I have been in discussion with over the past 72 hours. I have parents asking me to join. Prior to me moving forward with legal action, which will affect board members, school administrators, and the financial well-being of our school district, I want to be the voice of reason. I'm asking you to review the facts I presented today and consider moving to a mask optional status promptly. You segregated Hunter in a separate room for the past two days. Instead, send out an email to the parents and let them decide on their kids wearing a mask. This takes the burden off the Board. Think outside the box and create an environment that works for all within a functioning classroom. I will send you my suggestion on this. Lastly, over 250 schools in the past 48 hours have gone to a mask option status across the state of Illinois. This is far above the list of named districts. This is your choice. I ask that you consider all factors presented, allow our kids due process, and move forward in a manner that is morally sound for all. I appreciate my minutes up here and respectfully thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Ms. Nardi, Ms. Ruskow is in attendance. Wanted to make sure you noted that. Thank you. Discussion FOIA item requests?
There was one question submitted. I'm not quite sure what they're looking for. I'm assuming maybe they're doing a story on the technology used and any type of claims during remote learning last year. That's all I could. They did not specify what they were looking for.
It's interesting. They wanted to know how many items were stolen from the school.
I thought the numbers reporting out were very positive.
Yes.
Any additional questions on the FOIA? Anyone?
There was a second FOIA submitted, and that was the Illinois Retired Teachers Association. Information on both FOIAs are included in the board packet.
Thank you. Additional discussion items? Dr. Skinkis?
We can touch on the most recent, as we heard in citizen comments. As you are aware, there was a temporary restraining order in the case announced on Friday. The class action suit, which would apply to all the school districts, was denied. So we've been working closely with legal counsel over the weekend and West 40, the Regional Office of Education. As you saw, there was an article in The Landmark today. Most of the local area schools are still enforcing their mitigation process, and that includes masking. As I wrote in my community email that went out to the RB families, I do think if the cases continue to move this way, we could see ourselves, you know, maybe within the next month, rolling back some of our mitigations. We are coming off of the month of January where we had 140 cases. We're at nine cases right now as of February 8th that have been reported to the school. So, I mean, we're two weeks into the month of February. I think if we continue to see low case numbers, I think there are some things that we can do and communicate with the local health departments to try to roll back some of our mitigations, but I don't think we're at a place now. Now, obviously, if a different court ruling comes out, or if the Illinois Department of Public Health starts to roll back on their mitigations, we will be prepared to do so. We had implemented lighter mitigations this summer after, you know, when case numbers are really low. And I think if we continue to track in that park and in that fashion, we can roll back some of our mitigations, hopefully by before fourth quarter. But only time will tell. Also, I will be relying on the CDC, the IDPH, Cook County Department of Public Health.
Thank you. Any additional discussion items from the Board?
I'd just like to add to that. I was really appreciative of the information that was coming out from the administration to us as board members on such an issue that was not only impactful and fast-moving, to have that information available to us over the weekend so that we didn't walk into some place in the community and not be aware of what happened on Thursday, Friday, into Saturday and Sunday. And now, we're in the week of, we're waiting for what will come out of the lawsuit. I know a temporary restraining order is different than a final judgment by a judge, and so I don't know the difference if the temporary restraining order applies to only those people in the lawsuit, but that lawsuit isn't final yet, is from what I understand. But I'm appreciative of the information that was coming down to us over the weekend. Thank you.
Any other comments on this from the Board members? Looking to my right, looking to the left. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Skinkis and the administration, for keeping the health and safety of our students and staff foremost in your endeavors. So, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Should we move to a motion?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meeting held on January 11th and 25th, 2022, open and closed as presented in the February 8th, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to old business action items, life safety items, capital improvement, sustainability. Is there anything, Dr. Skinkis?
No update at this time. We'll talk a little bit. There was a question submitted about sustainability projects. I think Kristen's going to tie, Dr. Smatana's going to tie that into the ARAMAR contract as well as the school maintenance grant.
Okay, then we can jump in quickly to district goals. As we know, we've been talking about this since December and prior to December, with quite a bit of back and forth. I circulated last week to the Board what were the latest drafts. So these were the drafts that we had from December, based on public comment, based on comments and discussions here at the Board, based on discussions from colleagues. I'd like to go over those and read those into the record if we can, and then move forward with adoption if the group is comfortable. So, if I may...
Should be a handout copy.
Yeah, I think everyone has a handout copy, and if Bud was in board book as well, I believe. There we go. Thank you, Ms. Nardi. I'm not going to read what the draft was. I'm going to read what the, I'm calling it the working final draft, and if anyone has any additional wordsmithing or comments, please wait till I'm done reading each one. So goal number one, explore how to maximize curricular days to provide for academic rigor, new opportunities, and social emotional supports for all students. Want to take this one at a time or just keep reading? I'm going to look to my left, look to my right, jump in, or I can wait till I'm done.
I'm not comfortable with one. I don't know. I think that'll probably have a lot more conversation. I don't know if you want to come back one at a time. How do you want to do that?
So, the, well, the Board's discussion on this was to adopt these this evening. So I'd like to have that discussion about the content today. So let me finish reading through them.
That's what I'm asking.
Some comments specific to number one. Maybe we can get through some of the others if that's good for that one. Goal number two, research opportunities and methods to increase two-way engagement with all stakeholders of the RBHS community. Goal number three, continue ongoing training and engagement in diversity, equity, and inclusion. Goal number four, maintain responsible budgeting while investing in staff and programs directly affecting student outcomes. Goal number five, advocate to increase the district's physical footprint to support operations, curricular, and extracurricular utilization. The one point I would make before we do begin discussing these is, these are obviously the goal piece of our process, right? We adopted a new mission statement in January of 2020. We had a bit of a delay with the pandemic and that transition. These are the goals to support that mission statement, and the next step after this is the development of the metrics or the measurement of each of these goals.
Smart goals.
The smart goals, correct. Which will be much more engagement from the administration. We can look back at what our current administrator goals are, the current district goals, which truly are more measurement-type pieces, and work on what the work plan really is for the district to adopt over the coming year. So that being said, these goals are broad, and they are intended to encompass some of the major areas that we know are the focus of a Board of Education. So that being said, I know, Laura, do you want to jump in then if you had some comments on one?
I don't know if you want to get the goals that everyone agrees with, and they're just easy, low-hanging fruit, and then come back, but I just don't think that's the right verb. I'm okay with goals two to five.
Okay, so let me open up to the group. Any comments on goals two to five?
I have none.
Anyone?
No. I didn't submit any, so I don't have any here either.
Okay, yeah, and I didn't get additional comments either. So, goal number one, what do we have to say?
Okay, so on goal number one, the provide for academic rigor, it's not the right verb. When I think of what I expected of this school when we moved in district, I wanted my children to grow. I wanted to know that they were going to be academically challenged, that they were going to receive an excellent education, the curriculum was going to be new, teachers are qualified, and that they were going to gain. But if you just provide and you have all great classes and you have opportunities, it doesn't mean students are taking advantage of that. So we could have a checklist to say, we have tons of AP classes, we have tons of resources, but it doesn't say that we're growing our students. For me, that's what I want. I want them to be able to graduate, ready to go into college, and not have to take classes to get into classes. I want them to graduate and be successful when they go into college, be competitive. So that, to provide for academic rigor, it's skirting around the story. Provide means make available. I want more than make available. Making something available doesn't mean they're going to grow. Well...
But what?
But, I mean, I could sit there in the seat, come to school every day and be like, "I'm not doing this. I'm not doing this. I'm not doing this." I mean, that, like, I don't... Well, so here's the problem. We could have, and I'm throwing it out just to make a point. When we have the ACT score, okay? Now, I know we got a new test, but you could have an ATC score of 19, which you couldn't get into a college, and still have provided for academic rigor. That would not have been sufficient. So...
But what if 19 is the best that kid could do?
So what...
If that's the best the whole school should do, then that's not a goal that I'm comfortable shooting for.
What word do you suggest?
So, I want to grow kids. I want to see kids...
I don't see anything in there that says that we're not doing that. And that can also, some of the things that you're talking about, can be underneath in the smart goal.
Just providing for that opportunity doesn't, you're providing...
Again, so what word do you want?
I'm looking for...
You don't have it?
No, I don't have it. Because it was a discussion.
Then we're moving on. We want to be done with this tonight, Laura. We asked for you to submit comment. We've been working on this for a long time.
So I think what we can do...
Excuse me, this is where we do our work in public. We don't do our work outside of a public meeting. We can submit stuff, but, I'm sorry, Ramona, we have to have a discussion, and there's no way I could have a discussion with six other people outside of this meeting.
You talk.
So let me ask this then. So the way it's currently drafted, Laura's raised some concerns about, or her statement about providing for academic rigor is not strong enough, I would paraphrase. Would anyone like to discuss that further? Do we have any suggestions or agreement, or do we want to move ahead and identify those priorities through the metrics that would support this goal, which is what I would suggest is the path forward? So anything we're doing after the goal is adopted, whether it's SAT scores or growth on the MTSS, or whatever metrics we decide are appropriate, would identify that spirit of excellence that you're talking about?
See, right here, you're exploring how to maximize curricular days to provide for. So you've got kind of like two verbs there. I don't think what we want to do is, we want to strengthen academic growth, you know, to be, you know, more direct. We want to either strengthen or foster academic excellence, because that way you're pushing the academic excellence into the student. We're not exploring how a curricular day. That's kind of an intellectual exercise. How do we expand the curricular day so that somebody may or may not succeed?
So I think there's two comments I would make. One, it's not expand, it's maximize. We had a very extensive discussion about these word choices in December, and the idea was to take the days that our students have in this building, outside this building, and making sure that it identifies and finds solutions to their needs, from academic to social emotional.
Well, the conversation we had did include academic, and that's when I realized we had an omission. But I would like to foster, to focus on academic growth. I would like energies to be that we are pushing in, that we're working towards academic advancement, that we are training for academic advancement, that we are growing our students.
Okay, so let's give it one more chance. Tell me how you would like to see that first goal be read.
Well, to provide for, explore how to maximize curricular days to support academic rigor even more, or even to...
Could change out provide and put foster.
So instead of to provide for, because we don't want to provide for, but we want to support, we want to push for, we want to encourage academic rigor. We want to make academic rigor and, to provide for, is kind of that preferential phrase.
Okay, so I suggested foster. I think foster, let's read that through. Explore how to maximize curricular days to foster academic rigor?
Yes, that's much more direct.
I think, I understand the term provide as being sufficient, but I understand what you're, I think if the goal is to have some aspiration towards something, I think, you know, a new word in there makes sense. So foster, enhance...
Hance is good. Foster's good.
I still think of provide as being sufficient in the phrasing right now, but I understand where you're coming from. So I think, can we, as a group, decide on, do those make sense? Does it make sense what Laura's saying with regard to, I guess I'm seeing what you're saying as being more aspirational.
Because you're a teacher, so when you have kids in your classroom, and this is why I think it's important for us to have this, because we have the advantage of having somebody who teaches kids right here next to us. This is why we have, this is our working meeting. And when you have your students in class, you want to grow them. You want to see that pre-post. You provide many things in your classroom, but really, the end of all is, you want to see their growth.
Right, and I guess, what word would suffice...
Well, I like...
Foster, is that...
Foster, and I'm just wondering, I'm going to type in foster. I'm just wondering if there's anything...
Any thoughts over here on foster?
A little stronger.
Be critical on that?
Similar to fosters, encourage, promote, further stimulate, advance. I think foster's probably a word. I would say...
Promote.
The other thing is...
I just want to say that when we added maximize and academic rigor, to me, that was inherent, that we were going to take advantage of every second possible to ensure that our students were receiving the rigor that was then going to lead them to succeed. That's what rigor means to me. So, right, it's rigor, relevance, and relationships. How are we going to ensure that rigor is included? We're going to ensure that rigor is included by making sure that no second is wasted. That was my interpretation of the goal. If using foster is going to help us move through, let's do it, because the real work begins when the smart goals start. So let's just move it along.
Well, I think provide, you know, foster academic rigor, and, you know, that means that we are moving into the students and we're not moving around them, getting rid of, to provide for.
Sure, so let me read that and see if it sounds good to your ears. Explore how to maximize curricular days to foster academic rigor, new opportunities, and social emotional supports for all students. Is that where you think it needs to be? Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
The only thing I would add is, I appreciate Laura's input, but at the beginning, you started to talk about only those kids going to college, and we have kids in the school that go elsewhere.
Right.
And we want to support them too.
Right. And didn't mean to exclude those either.
I know, I just want to throw it out there.
Right.
Thank you.
But we can have a school, what I want to point out is, we can have a school with every whistle and bell. Doesn't mean anything if we're not looking to see how our students in whatever area they chose are growing. We can have the best music program with the best teachers and instruments, but if they're not playing, we've missed the mark.
And this statement, as it reads right now, is not contrary to what you're saying. It's not.
Well, I disagree with you, Ramona, and I, you know...
I know.
So, that can happen.
So I think we're going to clearly have some spirited discussion when it comes times to identifying, because we don't want 20. I'm going to say, I don't want 20, maybe some people do want 20, but I'm thinking a more manageable amount of supporting metrics for each of these will require a certain amount of research and homework. It's not all done here. It has to be done beforehand to a certain extent so that we understand what the options are. I would like to ask the Board to indulge me in asking the administration to take a first stab at some of the metrics in support of each of these goals, once we get to a point of adopting it, if the Board is open for that. Because I think they are best equipped to look at all of the available data and metrics out there and make some recommendations as to what they would suggest are appropriate smart goals for each, and then we can debate them from there. But that's getting a bit ahead of myself.
And I just, we do homework, yes. That's very clear. But I want to be very careful that we are also having our conversations in public, and it's got to be clear that we're not doing homework outside of the public eye, or making decisions outside of the public eye, or having offline conversations. That's what I'm bringing. So, yes, we do homework, we read things, but there has to be some discussion in public.
No, absolutely.
We've been doing this since December. We've had lots of discussion.
As I think, providing, I believe that providing suggestions before a meeting in no way jeopardize anything related to the Open Meetings Act or any of the sanctity of the Board discussion.
As long as there are one way.
Absolutely.
And they come to this superintendent.
Easy.
So let's move on. So, Ms. Towner, could I ask you?
I'm sorry. I'll keep my mouth shut the rest of the meeting, I promise. I'll just read the resolutions.
So, I think what you're saying, Laura, is when we get the packet on Friday, we have an opportunity, before you show up here, if you had any want for discussion on goal number one, give us a heads up. Send it up forward through, to the superintendent, copy the...
Board President.
Board President, and say, "I would like to discuss goal one because I don't like the word provide, blah, blah, blah." And then, it wouldn't just come up out of the blues, what some of the people are objecting to, in my opinion.
And I'm happy to do that, to say that, you know, I am uncomfortable with this, and I would like to have discussion when we come to the meeting. Happy to do that?
And please do. It's part of our Board rules that we actually revisited with Lori in December, right? That was a process we have talked about.
But no surprises. But, you know, we did say that we were going to discuss these, and that's why I didn't say that, because I came prepared to discuss these.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think we've probably gone as far as we can with this right now.
District goals. Are you ready for me to read this?
Please.
So what are we going to change one to?
The last version I just read was, explore how to maximize curricular days to foster academic rigor, new opportunities, and social emotional supports for all students.
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the district goals as presented in the February 8th, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
And amended. If you could change your, I think you need to say as presented and amended.
Let me read that again.
Thank you.
No problem.
And then I'll second.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the district goals as presented and amended during the meeting, presented during the Board Agenda Packet, and amended during the meeting in the February 8th, 2022 meeting and packet. That sounds, does that okay, Kevin?
Yep.
Second.
Thank you. I do, let's do a roll call on that, if we could. Do we need a roll call? I think it's appropriate for the citizen action.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Before we move on to the ARAMAR contract, I would ask the Board to support me in asking the administration to look at some of those smart goals, measurements for each of these goals, and over the coming months, we can address them in a fashion that makes the most sense to the Board and the administration. Perhaps it's, maybe we... Perhaps it's, maybe we start with goal number five and move our way up.
Yeah, would you like to take, like, one a week, maybe?
That's what I think you, yeah.
I mean, one a meeting, so like, take number...
I think some of these, perhaps, a couple of these lend themselves to two in a meeting, but I would defer to the administration's judgment. There are some report card metrics that make a lot of sense to funnel right into these larger goals. There's some current things that the administration measures that make sense, that we track, and they would dovetail very nicely, but there's other issues that are going to need a little bit more back and forth and some, some negotiation amongst ours as to what we're looking to measure. So that's where, Dr. Skinkis, I would ask your support on that.
Okay.
So, is it appropriate to ask a question?
Yeah.
The timeline that we have for the...
You know, to kind of summarize from, from the IASP Packet, Superintendent takes the plans to the administrative team and other staff for development of an action plan, which we're calling the SMART Goal Measurements. And then the next board meeting is when we start looking through each of those. So I think our shared goal, we have other board items that are coming up that are, that will take some amount of discussion, so I think between Dr. Skinkis and the team, we can present these in a fashion. So we don't, we know to July or August, let's get them done March, April, May.
I was going to say, because if we know that they need to be done before June 30, or by June 30, and we say, can we be done by May 15, so that we have a month and a half, one, to catch up, and two, to like, have these rich back and forth conversations.
Well, also, I think the board needs to understand, like, based on the conversations we get, you may have seven things that you want to address on a SMART goal, we're not going to address all seven in the 22, 23 school year. We would start with the one, and we put that other seven in a bucket, and then we would grow towards them, and hopefully we could bring them all together. It's not going to be five different matrix for goal one and four different for goal two, because what happens then is we have 21 SMART goals, or 15 SMART goals, and then none of them are going to be SMART goal, right? We're not going to, so I think we try to, we should try to lay out three to five priorities for each of these goals, and then address whether they could be addressed, you know, in two school years, three, and then we write a goal to try to track, address each one per school year, or if there's two, right?
I completely agree. I think the current goals are really top-heavy towards academics and not the other areas, so I think the trick here, to some extent, is a new balance. But my suggestion is we maybe wait for that goal number one and start with some of goals two through five.
So, piggybacking off of Lori's comment, these goals are, we had talked about incorporating them into the new contracts, and I believe those conversations start to happen in March.
Which new contracts? The administrative new contracts?
Yes, correct, because they're, because the administrative contracts will line up with our goals. So, we want to make the commitment to say, and taking some of the ones that seem that they'd lend themselves easiest to talk to together, maybe the next few meetings, we just need to pull over sleeves and, because we're not going to have, like you said, we're not going to have 20 indicators for all of these, let's maybe the next meeting get like, three of them done or something like that, so that we'll be ready by the administrative contracts.
I think there's general support to move through these as expeditiously as possible, so I think that seems reasonable.
That was certainly the spirit, as my question about process was the intent, like, we, while we're working on it, what's working on?
As a housekeeping matter, we have eight meetings, the second Tuesday of each month, and the fourth Tuesday of each month, so I wouldn't want a goal to end on the 15th of the month, because the meetings will be before or a week after that. And there's only one meeting in June, June 14, and currently that's the last four meetings scheduled for this fiscal year, so there's eight of them.
Ideally, we want to have this done in May, so that...
After tonight.
As we're developing the budget, finalizing the budget, if there's been fiscal needs, we're prioritizing those fiscal needs over other things that we've done in the past, right? Refocus our priorities to align with the SMART goals and the overall district goals. So I would hope that we can knock this out before the end of May.
With our contracts, what would we have to have done to move something into the contract?
I don't know if the, that will impact administrative contracts totally, because some of those incentives can tie into some of these goals. I don't know if, like, engaging two-way communication, if that's like, for the 22 and 23 school year, hiring a card time communication person and generating surveys, right?
Like, that's not something that would need to go on everybody's administrative calendar.
So maybe one suggestion is to look at the current administrator goals, and if those are items that need to be addressed or tweaked in some way, let's have that discussion early on, or if they're, if we feel they're important to pass them through to 22, 23, maybe we quickly act to do that. I'm looking at things like the ninth grade students on track, the graduation rates, those type of metrics that we all know are good baseline judgments, but they do tie well to how we structure the administrative contracts.
And like, the financial one, well, the financial one, like we said, we want before we do the next budget.
We'll be okay. Let me work on it.
Yes, thank you.
We'll get you some direction for the next meeting. Looking at my two cabinet members, Hector and Kristen, this will be something we'll be working on.
Thank you both, in advance. Can we move on to the contract extension for Airmark?
Kristen, you want to take the lead on this, please?
Sure, so this is a second read, asking for approval tonight. As I previously explained, the current contract with Airmark expires on June 30. We have met with the Facility Advisory Council on December 8 to review Airmark's work. Since then, Dr. Skinkis and I have met with Airmark on two separate occasions. The administration is recommending a five-year contract extension. Highlights of the negotiated terms include tying the base rate increase to prior year CPI, to aligning the district's tax levy, maintaining the 2% prepayment discounts, and receiving a grant of $125,000 for future sustainability projects in the district. There was a question submitted in regards to that. For the timing of the grant, we typically receive the grant right after the new contract is started, as a lump sum, and then we have the ability to spend it over the next year, you know, couple of years, however quickly or slowly we want, in regards to sustainability projects. Some ideas that we have for sustainability include solar panels, drivers add electric cars, we have the charging stations, but they are not hooked up yet, we need to do some wiring underground. So that is also one of the things that we have been discussing. HVAC upgrades to cafeteria and the libraries, so we can have controls based upon occupancy in those spaces, and lighting upgrades for LED lights, as we've been working throughout the building to do that over the past couple of years. Some of what we will choose to spend the money on will ultimately depend on, too, whether or not we receive the school maintenance grant, which will be discussed later as well.
I assume there was a tie-in to that, I was on your list, but thank you for providing the larger list, I appreciate it. Any more questions on Airmark, if anyone? No, I think we are ready.
Okay. Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the five-year contract extension with Airmark as presented in the February 8, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
We have a second?
Yes.
Dr. Welch?
Mike Welch, second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to new business payment of bills.
There are three questions submitted. The first question is on Board Book page 43 regarding a custom mirror for $400. That was in our spin room, a student accidentally bumped into the mirror and breaking it, and so we had to get a custom mirror in order to replace it. It was charged out of maintenance contracts due to a keystroke error, so that will be corrected after this meeting. It should have gone into repairs. Another question was submitted on Board Book page 63 in regard to fingerprinting for the Illinois State Police. In 2018, we began conducting fingerprinting here at RB, and not only do we do RB employees, but we also provide the service for District 96, 95, 105 on occasion, and then both Airmark and Quest, and then we invoice them for that service. Illinois State Police requires that we give them an upfront payment, and then they spend down that balance. Anecdotally, I know, you know, District 96 and 95 had a lot of hiring, more so than normal, at the start of the year, and so we spent down that balance a little quicker than we normally would. The last question submitted was in regards to boys and girls basketball workers and contest workers. I don't know if that was in reference to RB staff for, like, table workers and ticket takers, or if it was for referees, but I can answer both. So for RB workers, so that's security, ticket takers, scoreboard, those are contractual rates set in our CBA, and then official rates are set by an organization called NISC-O, Nisco, which is an organization that all officials are associated with and IHSA uses. So those rates, refs are $67 per varsity game and $53 per game for lower level, and then tournament rates have different, tournament rates are a little different. I was not able to get my hands on that today.
My question basically was, you know, you have the quantity, and sometimes the quantity is one, and it says $75, and sometimes the quantity is two, and it says $75. And I'm just, like, I'm looking at, on Board Book 103, and the gymnastic contest worker is one at $59.38, and I'm just asking to be fiscally responsible with our money, that we make sure that this looks correct to the rest of us here. Because, because if you look at these bills, I mean, 75% of them are referees, workers, and things we do for our students, right? So I just had that question, wanted to make sure that, you know, someone's setting the rates for the girls referees get paid more than the boys referees, and it's all something we have no control over. Do they still submit those cards?
They still submit those timesheets, yes.
From 10, 15 years ago, when I used to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you, and I wanted to just make sure that, you know, we're the, we're the kind of repository for the fingerprints of the area, and we put out the money, and so it's all in file, so if we need a fingerprint, we just send them over, right? And we don't have to, like, send them over with a check.
Yeah, I can work, too, on, on...
No, I'm not asking for any...
The verbiage changing a little bit, like, for example, on page 102, wrestling contest worker, that was a tournament, which is why it was 95. Boys' basketball, that was two games at 75. When you go down to gymnastics, that was tickets, and so that's why it was the contract rate of 23, 75. So I understand your point, and it probably would, it would, we can work on the...
I just want to bring it up that we're, we're asking about things.
Okay.
I'm not going to pile on here, but I didn't ask the question because I got a partial answer, but on page 53, 52, and 53, there are two busses that were scheduled, that they don't have a note as to what they pertain to, and then there's two below, one is robotics and one's math club, or math team. I was just curious, when I was reading through it, I'm not asking for an answer now, because I know you're not going to be able to pull the answer as to what those were, but if that could just be noted in the way that it was on the math team and robotics club, it would be appreciated.
Yep, not a problem.
But overall, I thank you for the detail and the hard work the office does.
Any other questions on bills?
Can we get a motion, please, on payment of bills?
Payment of bills. The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented in the February 8, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Ms. Narity, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
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 Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to the school maintenance grant.
Dr. Schmittanna?
The school maintenance grant is something I mentioned at the last board meeting, and I'm looking for approval tonight, and then this is the first thorough read of this. The school maintenance project grant is a dollar-for-dollar matching grant program that the state randomly provides. This isn't something that they provide on a regular basis or a predictable basis, providing awards up to $50,000 to school districts exclusively for maintenance and upkeep of buildings and structures for educational purposes. Applicants are required to provide a match from local funds, and so one component of the grant is, before you can apply, you need board approval for what the board has approved we would be spending the money on. I've attached the district's grant application for bathroom partitions throughout the 18 bathrooms in the school. We've been slowly doing this over the past two years, but some of them are in bad shape and are rusting, and we'd like to change them out quicker than we were initially planning over the next several years. And then also, the wiring, as I previously mentioned, needed to connect the electric car charging stations. We did a lot of that work underground when we did the stadium renovation and the parking lot, but they don't, the wiring doesn't run all the way to the transformer as we need it to. So that, right now, they are not operational until we fix that. Recently, we received this grant in 2020 for the summer roof projects that we did then, so we received the $50,000 back then, and we have not spent that money that we received in 2020 yet, so we could use that money to offset some of this work that we would then be doing.
Is that amount that's left more than $14,000? Do you know?
Um...
The $50,000 from 2020, I believe she's asking, you said it was not spent?
Correct.
Down.
No, we didn't spend any of the $50,000 that we received in 2020.
Yes, it's 14,000.
So we would put all of that towards the $64,000, the $42,000 we'd be spending out of our pocket.
Gotcha.
As long as that's appropriate, we have to spend some of our own money to get that money, as long as we do that right.
Correct. I tried to pick projects, too, that were roughly around the total of $100,000.
Very good.
So, I have a question. Did you say that we did spend any of the money that we got the grant for? Aren't we required, if we get the grant, to spend the money that we got the grant for?
In 2020, we had a roofing project of roughly $650,000. We spent $650,000, we submitted that grant, and we received $50,000 from...
So we've basically spent $600,000 of our pocket?
Basically, we were, we were anticipating having to spend $650,000 of our own, so even though the state gave us money, we had budgeted $650,000 for that roofing project that we no longer needed to spend, we only needed to really spend $600,000 when everything was settled up. So we have that $50,000 set aside that we, we were planning on spending on the roof that we ultimately didn't need to spend.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want it to seem like we're asking for state grants and not spending money from a grant that we said we would spend, so, but what we're saying is that the extra 50, we had promised to spend of our own money, we still have available because we had the grant.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And with any grant, too, you have to submit expenditure reports quarterly to show that you're, yeah, spending the money, and how you are saying you will spend the money for the grant, and so those were included, and that grant was closed down.
I said the same thing without getting the weeds, as long as it's appropriate, go for it. As long as it's appropriate, that...
As long as it's appropriate, yeah, we don't want to be on that list.
As long as it's appropriate, we're giving them the authority to do this for us, okay.
So any objections moving forward with this this evening, though?
No.
No. I think this is, good work, Dr. Schmittanna and team, thank you.
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the school maintenance project grant application as presented in the February 8, 2022 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Mr. Van Horace?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. The second opportunity for visitor statements, I don't believe we have any visitors remaining. Any requested discussion items? I know we talked about mitigations earlier, whether, whether any other, it was slightly out of order, any other discussion items from anyone? Looking, looking. Any consideration of items for future meetings from anyone? The second opportunity for visitor statements, I don't believe we have any visitors remaining. Any requested discussion items, I know we, we talked about mitigations earlier, were there any other, take this slightly out of order, any other discussion items from anyone? Looking, looking. Any consideration of items for future meetings from anyone, looking to the right, looking to the left? And moving into matters for closed session, I believe we have personnel, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, school safety, all under the auspices of closed session.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second. Second from Ms. Gasko, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Durbin?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Horst?
Yes.
Yes.